How are you?
In the name of God Almighty, the most merciful, the most gracious. We praise Him. We seek His help and guidance. And we seek His protection from our weaknesses and from the distractions of the world. We ask God Almighty to keep us in His protection at all times. We ask God Almighty to guide us on the path that He pleases him. We have asked God Almighty to protect protect us from the distractions of the world and make it easy for us to achieve the bold, ambitious endeavors on the face of the earth. For Brother Scott, who is receiving his promotion today, we pray for him, a special prayer for him and his family. May God Almighty guide him to discharge his duties and responsibilities in justice and fairness. May God Almighty protect him and his family, and may God mighty always keep him in the path of righteousness. Amen.
Good man, thank you. Now for our second discussion, where we were discussing personnel regarding state legal matters. And at this time, I would like to ask for approval of our minutes from June. Are there any questions?
Councilman Folds?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen? Councilwoman Alameen? Councilwoman Alameen?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Green?
Yeah.
Councilman Simpson?
He's connecting right now.
Councilman Folds? Councilman Simpson?
Yes, I can hear you.
Councilwoman Allen and Norris?
Yes.
Thank you.
To approve our county's mayables, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Are there any questions or comments regarding our county's mayables? Or county's beliefs?
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Alameen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Folds?
Yes.
Councilman Simpson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Levin and Norris?
Yes.
Thank you.
Onto our presentation, clearing for our time, Officer Scott. How we pronounce that word? That. So full-time office there.
Thank you, Madam President. Just by way of introduction, this vacancy occurred with the retirement of a long time, twenty year police officer Ryan Wright, who we had mentioned in previous council meeting retired before our defense. So upon his retirement, security services department. voted one of the officers, Phil Ryan's position. County's investigation. That's still part of the matter. And so to fill position at Phil harder than occupied was patrol officer. Last council meeting nominated Officer Luddy. Part-time and full-time, council graciously approved that nomination. And here we are tonight with Judge Chines here to swear Officer Luddy out. So just a little information on Officer Luddy. Scott Luddy was born and raised in Chester County, graduated from Ruston High School in Westchester in 2016. When makes parole. resides in the county with his girlfriend and their son. He graduated from the Delaware County Police Academy in July of 2020 and was hired by the Birmingham Township Police Department in April of 21. And then Officer Luddy came to the Coastal Police Department as a trainee in December of 2021. He completed a SEAL training in March of 2022. Officer Luddy continued to work with the Coastal Police Department and the Birmingham Township Police Department as a sworn officer until his selection for full-time here with Coastal Police Department. So present here tonight are his family, which includes his girlfriend's father, John Reagan, over in the corner, but some of you may remember John was an officer here with the C of Coachville before he left us to continue his career with the county township police department. Thank God for coming tonight. And also representing the police department are two of our police chaplains here tonight. We have the Imam from the masjid over on Versus Street. Mohammed is here tonight, one of our police chaplains, and he offered a very, very well-received prayer to give it up tonight. Special recognition of Officer Luddy and that the Lord be with him. So we appreciate that. And also Pastor Montez Jones of Judah Ministries here tonight. One of our other police chaplains. We give special thanks for both of them to be here tonight. Now, if we could have their times come forward, Officer Luddy and both my girlfriend and their son.
I am Richard Aye, I am being doing point, being all and before marketing. You sound nice. About four, very. Central Orange, South East, Little Bay, National Ward, and Southern. In Catholic. Last, last, all the form of the videos.
Council wants to do.
That stuff is our enclave.
Hello? Good evening. My name is Joseph Martino. I'm a Labor Resource Associate at Justice County OIC. And I am speaking on behalf of the Work Enclave Program.
Not as nervous as they said, Mr.?
Um, I is, I feel like I'm faking it a little bit better, so still a little nervous. So with me tonight is our lead facilitator, Jenny Livingston. They've died the other day, the Labor Resource Associate. And representing the cohort, the current cohort tonight, we have Antoine Davis, who will be accepting the certificates on behalf of the cohort. I also will be reading a speech made by another participant, Lamar Johnson, who unfortunately could not be here tonight, but he really did want to have his voice heard, so he asked if he could write a speech and have me read it on his behalf, so I'll be doing that. Hi, everyone. I want to start by apologizing that I couldn't be here in person, but I still wanted to let you know the impact the OIC Work Enclave has had on me. I really appreciated the dedication that the staff at the OIC showed throughout the entire enclave. They were very supportive of my needs and very easy to talk to. I have gained more self-confidence far as speak, as far as speaking in group settings and broadening and broadened my insight on proper work ethic and to prepare me for stepping back into the work industry. They gave me the means and opportunity to get a proper resume done and shine light on my strengths. I also completed my customer service certification, which is definitely something that will help me find permanent employment, and I am extremely grateful. The OIC Work Enclave is definitely something that the Coachville area definitely needs and can help build a better future for our young and community. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to express my gratitude to the OIC. Thanks so much for this award, it means a lot to me. Then I just want to further extend my thanks on behalf of the OIC for the council's support and recognition of our program.
Okay, so I have the certificate of recognition here. I will read Antoine's and then I'll read the other names, but not the entire certificate. So chicken certificate of recognition, Antoine Davis. The city of Coatsville recognizes people who make an impact and play a role in the lives of Coatsville residents. And as of July 13, 2022, Antoine Davis will have completed diversity awareness training, team building, mindfulness workshops, and deeply explored mental health and resiliency. This entails spending forty-five hours cleaning up the 19320 from east to west end parks, businesses, and residential areas such as Ash Park, Friendship Park, Adella Park, Dollar Tree Lot, Oak Street, South Church Street, Lincoln Highway, First Avenue from Fourth Avenue, and more. And spending thirty hours in the classroom, learning of community resources and bonding with other 19320 residents in the surrounding areas. And Antoine Davis has expressed love and care for the city as well as taking this unfamiliar path as one of the first Work Enclave ambassadors. And Antoine now has work readiness, emotional intelligence, and soft skills training, and may enter advanced programs such as business, culinary, manufacturing, nursing, technology, and/or customer service. The Work Enclave has not only transformed the lives of its participants, but it has encouraged each one to become a registered voter, to have a greater understanding of local government and how they can support their community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Coatsville recognizes and salutes Antoine Davis for his selfless, faithful dedication, proclaimed and enacted this eleventh day of July, 2022.
And if I could just, I just want to add on that it's very appropriate that Antoine is acting as representative tonight because he quickly established himself as a leader in this cohort. And I'm also, if I may. He's in the final moments of securing a job at AGC in Thorndale.
The names of the other participants are Shannon Sire Jr., Louis Rosario. Stanley Twine. Tyron Watson. Philip Watkins. Lamar Johnson. And Frank Bango. Congratulations to you all. Thank you for your willingness to participate and be a very enthusiastic part of the forward motion of our seat. Thank you. Onto our items of discussion. Do we have any discussion regarding our meeting minutes? Landlord tenant cleanup?
Thank you, Madam President. Section item 4.2 regarding landlord tenant cleanup. We receive or have received a number of calls in reference to, again, trash and dumping in those various areas in our communities. A lot of them have been cited on landlord property. That's an issue where tenants are moving out of rental properties and they are leaving a large amount of trash, furniture, strollers, you name it. And in terms of the codes, we have our code enforcement representatives, they go out and they're don't know who's the site in this case. We have a landlord or have several landlords that don't feel that it's their responsibility. They say it is the tenant that's doing it, but it's on their property. So the discussion tonight is, you know, what the city likes to do. Our coast departments have shared, looking at other communities, that landlords should educate their tenants on when they rent and when they, you know, depart. They must clean up. There's been other ideas floating that maybe the landlord should increase the deposit amount if you get from some of the renters. But at the end of the day, you know, the city continues to be burdened, you know, trash and individual dumping when they are vacating some of the properties. So that's.
I think it's the landlord's responsibility. They should put that as part of their lease, meaning they have security deposit. So they have security deposit, and that would be a reason why they would not have to return this security. You know, but it should be a part of their lease. The continued cleanup of the property, whether it's moving in or moving out. You know, because it's the homeowner's responsibility, the mess is left on the property. So the landlord should be responsible for it, for him that's headed, take care.
Councilman Simpson, Ms. Alameen, any comments?
I would agree that it would fall on the landlord. There should be a section in their lease that, you know, upon the termination of the lease, on no matter whose part it is, that, you know, if they don't leave the inside in a good condition, or the same with the outside, there's usually a billable rate so much per hour within the lease, and that is usually deducted from the security deposit along with proof of what they paid, the invoice or whatever. And then if there's anything left, then they return it to the tenant. If there's nothing left and it's an additional cost, then that becomes a civil issue where they have to take them over to the MDJ level to recoup the rest of their money if it exceeds what the security deposit is.
I saw five hundred block of vacant highway two weeks in a row. It had to be someone moved, but there was so much. I have furniture, carpets, trash, what have you, sitting in the, on the sidewalk. And two weeks in a row, Eagle got it the first time. Following week, more out there, and Eagle got it again. I mention this because the city has to pay the tipping fees. So rather than the landlord getting a dumpster and cleaning out his property, he put the stuff out there for Eagle to pick up, for us as residents to pay the cost for his cleanup, and it's not fair. We have to be mindful when we see things of this nature, report it. Call the codes office, say it's out there, because again, it's coming out of our pockets. Even though it's not our trash or whatever you want to call it. It's not ours, but we're paying to dispose of it. So when you see something of that nature, you don't have to say, I saw John Doe put this, that, or the other. You just report the fact that there's a huge pile of trash out in front of 529 East Lincoln Highway. I said 529 because that's my house number, just don't live on Lincoln Highway. But I just that, yeah, I'm just saying that number. But just to say you saw it there, it brings awareness to the codes department, and then they can take the necessary steps. We want to clean our city up, we have to help see it become cleaned. That's all I want to say about that.
We had that incident last week on Lincoln Highway. Whatever happened with that, did the codes department go out there?
Yes, and I sent out the codes team. I tend to lean towards citing the landlord. So we looked up the landowner on the Chester County views, found out what the name was, the address, and we actually sent him a note saying that you're responsible for this cleanup. So me personally, being the head of the codes area, I go to the landowner more than I do the tenant. So we did notify that landlord.
Yeah, but what do we do about the trash?
It's gone, so I'm not sure where they got it or whether you had it, but it's no longer there.
Okay, I mean, that's a landowner issue. I don't see why the city, you know, should have to pay for that.
Did we build, said we built last?
I have to find out how.
Yeah, but wouldn't, but wouldn't we have, why do we have to go to Chesco Views? Wouldn't we have information for that rental property in codes?
I found out who the owner of the property was, went to Chesco Views and looked up ownership record, and then we cross-checked it against the city's tenant landlord listing and communicated with the landlord.
So when was the last, now they're all up to date on their inspections and everything like that for that property?
I can't answer the question, I can tell we were specifically worried about the one instance of having the trash out on the curb.
Also, the trash receptacles that are on Lincoln Highway. Tenants from the apartments on Lincoln Highway are dumping their trash in the trash receptacles. Therefore, the pedestrians to dispose of the trash, not the tenants. So I don't know how we'll address that, how we can at least send a note to landlords letting them know that they need to inform their tenants that those receptacles are not for the apartments. Any other? Any other discussion regarding?
So I just wanted to make sure that we had a close loop on this. So are we going to explore a landlord type of communicate in reference to what the landlords are responsible for? a landlord type of communicate in reference to what the landlords are responsible for?
They know, they know they're responsible. They know that. They've always been.
And I think check with you, Rob, on other municipalities that have already been forced.
Okay, four point three, enterprise proposal.
Four basic comments regarding the enterprise proposal. We anticipate bringing to council in August a contract to help manage our basic city fleet vehicles consistent with the strategic comments, recommendations and issues that have come up over the years. The task force was put together, including police officers, the chief, accountants, input from public works and codes and references to check. And one of the big users of this program is Chester County. They just use thirty six vehicles. And so they've been doing it in their point three, all the aspects of it. And, and I'm paraphrasing what Sergeant Boyle had done as a reference setting, but he kept a couple of other places in common law. It's a big trend happening within Pennsylvania. It is part of the Source Wealth Contract of Pennsylvania government and so the projected benefits are we get management tools that as a smaller city, you don't necessarily have access to. We get that for more of our fleet as opposed to having a dedicated person who's police department handling the fleet. We have more broader coverage of management support. We have access to professional resources. And we have on a rookie basis review of all repair bills. But we expect that we're going to be getting better gas mileage, better repair costs, buying power. There's a lot of nuances in that. Better safety with the vehicles, being able to, to swap out some of the older vehicles and and the obvious thing is picking the tires to come into this. With, with the, the numbers and the analysis, it's five hundred thousand dollars. It's over five hundred thousand dollars over ten years. So.
It's more cost effective to have the vehicle managed by a fleet server. Because the one, they're going to manage all of your repairs. They're going to, before you get a repair done, they have to be called into the fleet server. So they'll be the one, they'll know, hey, we just got this done this time. Why is this messed up again or, or, you know what I mean? Whereas someone here locally, the office has to monitor. And your question from city council, why this costs so much? Why this part, this part was just in the top? The fleet service will manage that process for us and we'll see it changed in repairs automatically.
Yeah, and I think you're speaking from the firsthand experience outside. So I, I would give context where, where to supplement what you say yes. And, and there's a little nuance in here that I hadn't thought about is they save their client company three and a half million dollars and out of warranty savings. Because of the leverage, they can say, timeout, we've had fifty others like this. You need to do warranty coverage. So there's, there's, I could talk for twenty minutes on all the different savings that were identified. Do you, you want to add anything that I've missed?
No, our closest reference was just guy detectives being part of the state government. And it'd be their fleet and they were very pleased with it. Recommend that we have an opportunity to explore it, definitely entertain the idea of going to. That was sort of the closest local reference, rural Westchester, same thing. Of course, countywide, the whole fleet sheriff's vehicles and everything, every vehicle that the county has covered on this new program. Seem to be well.
Awesome. So stop there. Any other questions or comments from council? Thank you so much, sir. I think, I thank you because you're, again, leading us in the right direction. So thank you so much. I mean, I'm sorry, the balance.
Councilman Simpson?
Yes.
Councilman Fokes?
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Allen? All right. Councilwoman Alamine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Lavender North?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, then we're on to our regular back of the item six point one. Receive and consider a motion to approve an ordinance for first reading entering into a lease with Proudfoot Investments for the property located at three hundred East Lincoln Highway, Coatesville, County of Chester for the purpose of operating a parking lot for a one-year term with automatic annual renewal and will rental payment one dollar in this payment in advance. Execution of the lease. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Green and Alamine?
Yeah. Okay.
As you're aware, the R D A used to own this property and the city used to lease it from the R D A for a while as well and utilize it as a parking lot. The same thing is going to be happening. The property was just sold to Proudfoot Investments. I think end of May, maybe June, around that time period. So while this property is still in Proudfoot Investments' hands, up until they decide to develop the property, the, the improvements are still physically there for the parking lot, the, the odds essentially. So the city is entering essentially back into the original agreement that it had with the R D A, but this time it's just with Proudfoot Investments. The intent is that this, I'm, I'm assuming the intent is that this operates up until potential wind development.
Are there any questions or comments? In full.
Councilwoman Green? Councilwoman Alamine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen? Councilmen Fokes?
Yes.
Councilman Simpson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lavender North?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments? We're about to close. Were there any questions or comments regarding six point one? Call council.
Councilman Simpson?
Yes.
Councilman Fokes? Councilwoman Allen? Councilwoman Alamine?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lavender North?
Yes.
Thank you.
Onto our report, seven point one, Mr. Jefferson.
Thank you, Madam President. I provided a more detailed attorney-client privileged report to council. Since council last meeting, I provided and continue to provide legal advice to the city regarding land development matters. I communicated with outside counsel regarding certain litigation matters. My office has worked on certain right to no matters. I drafted an ordinance regarding a lease. I attended an ordinance update meeting. And most recently, I attended both the ribbon cutting ceremony at the Innovation Center and the Unity Day at Gateway Park. That is my report unless there are any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll start with the eight point seven comment that I made about the old bank building on the corner of First and Lincoln Highway. The old bank building, I reported that it's moving in the sales process and it is now under contract. We're very excited about that. And with that contract comes a ninety day due diligence. The investor is looking to close by Q four with a targeted opening spring of twenty twenty three. So we're, again, very excited about that. Next item I have is last Wednesday. The city of Coatesville and Puttstown University completed summer business field training. We had approximately ten participants this second. We anticipate a larger group in the fall. The workshops were twenty five dollars for six week and we now provided training ranging from marketing, branding, financing, traditional, non-traditional financing. And it was a, it was a wonderful session this year. One of the things that we continue to notice with this program is that there's so much talent here in Coatesville. We have a number of entrepreneurs that are thirsty, start their business. Working with Puttstown University in store, along with the Economic Development Council this year. They put together a wonderful program. We talked to some of our participants about code. So it was a well-rounded workshop and I think as we continue to work with the university, we're going to see more of these emerging entrepreneurs in the city of Coatesville. That was great. The next item I have is the Unity Day event that just took place on Saturday. I just want to congratulate the city of Coatesville for its Unity Day celebration. That was Saturday, July ninth. Special thanks to the planning committee for all of the work that they did and and the volunteerism. I won't say all of the names, but some of the individuals are in the room. I want to give a shout out to the Parks and Rec and its new fearless leader and chairperson, Jenny Livingston. Jenny, thanks for putting together a lot of great things there. We had some artwork out there. We had some games for the kids. We're all running around having a good time. This was the first year that we invited our residents to bring out their barbecue grills. There were only, I think, maybe one that was out there. And Ricky was barbecuing and passing out some of his chicken, I think. Big thanks to M C D C, America's Finest, Mr. Jose Colon. He came through this year. He had a, a car display. And the entry for the car display was a toy. And so that was kind of a Christmas in July type of program there. He got a number of folks that came in with their vehicles, donated a toy which he is going to distribute around the holiday season. And, you know, our hats go off to both M C D C and America's Finest for that. All of the volunteers, I said, thank you very much. Didn't get a chance to thank everyone on Saturday. Sometimes when I'm on the microphone, I look out there and forget about some people, but we just really want to thank everyone that participated and helped bring this together. Also, we want to thank all of our sponsors. We had a tremendous response this year of sponsors that helped make the Unity Day numbers, so to speak. And, and then we had our vendors that came out. And we had some wonderful food, again, local vendors supporting your, your local businesses. We had Simply Shrimp. We had Young Lady. We brought her taco type of foods out, Luna, I think is the name of it. And then we just had a mixture of other wonderful vendors. I want to give a special shout out to our Public Works guys. They did an incredible job. They was on the scene early Saturday morning. For some of you who were kind of debating whether to come out on Saturday, we did have some rain. But that rain went away right before we got started. So we were blessed with the window between two and about eight o'clock, eight thirty, a clear day to have this wonderful event. We also had our volunteer firefighters out on Saturday. That was incredible. Along with them, we had our Coatesville Fire Department and of course, we had our police department out here. So Chief Niffu, but I don't know if you guys. And last but not least, if we had an M V P award, it would go to the one and the only, Mr. Donald Fokes. Oh, wait, let me correct myself. Mr. Donald Dunk Paint. Councilman Fokes, I'd like to thank you for your outstanding display of bravery and your water polo style synchronization that you put up there. And we loved your Harlem Globetrotters. But, you know, you pulled out all the stops for this. We really appreciate it. You're representing your ward in flying colors. Thank you. Appreciate you. The last thing I have is regarding events. So following the Unity Day, go right into our Sounds of Summer, which will begin August fifth, August nineteenth, September second, and September sixteenth. These events will be held in Abdullah Park starting at six thirty and we hope you all will come out. Last year, we had great turnout. We had fish on a Friday, which is very appropriate. And we just had a lot of people come out with us to some nice jazz and R and B. So again, this year, we hope to see folks come out again. That I can't answer. I don't know if fish is coming back. I'm sorry, I do have one more item. This is the D V R P C tip information. Many of you know that every four years, the Transportation Improvement Program, which is originally agreed upon program, a multimodal federally funded, I'll read it here, priority transportation projects over a four-year period as required by the federal law. This draft here is for fiscal twenty twenty three. This is the Transportation Improvement Draft for Pennsylvania, again, fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty six. You can go online and take a look at it. It covers Bucks County, Chester County, Delaware, Montgomery County, and the Philadelphia, and Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. The program reflects costs and schedules for more than three hundred and ninety-one highway and transit projects and represents over seven point five billion dollars in transportation infrastructure in five counties in the D V R P C region. Of course, that includes Coatesville. D V R P C requires a major update to the Pennsylvania tip every other year to coincide with the update of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. This, this constrained statewide twelve-year program and releases a draft program for review and comment period prior to recommending its adoption. This has not been adopted yet. Couple of weeks ago, as a matter of fact, it was June, June twenty eighth, they closed public comments of the city of Coatesville. We did provide a public comment and it was important that we provide public comment along with a number of organizations in this community. Chester County Economic Development Council, Second Century Alliance, and a host of others. A lot of our political leaders wrote in and we wanted to ensure and make sure that D V R P C supports the efforts to get SEPTA to the city of Coatesville. I personally spoke to one of the representatives. There will be a follow-up call. Again, this is a draft. We don't know what the outcome is going to be, but we hope that the folks that submitted their comments, we hope that individuals that support the efforts of bringing back SEPTA are going to be heard and will be, you know, eagerly awaiting the outcome of what the decision is going to be. But I encourage you all to go to the DVR PC website, look up the fiscal year 2023 tip. It gives you a general overview. It also speaks to some of the funding. It doesn't say anything about Coatesville specific, but it will show you an illustration of SEPTA funding, and it breaks it down to the various counties. So let's keep our fingers crossed. Let's hope that they will look at the City of Coatesville favorably so that we do see SEPTA in our community in coming years. And that concludes my report for this.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of things in tonight's report. I will seem like always report on COVID. Most recent Chester County numbers are we have jumped back up to moderate. So please be aware of your situation, please be aware where you are. I've had a chance to be away this past weekend, and the town I was in, it was mixed movie theater. Almost no one wore masks, but the mall people wore. So, you know, when you're five feet apart, people had no masks on when you're 30 feet apart in the mall. We did. We've just bounced up again here in Chester County, so we want to be aware of where we are in the county itself. I want to make some, a little clarification on last meeting's announcement on the trash collection. So there's no confusion on how this is handled. The first phone call that a resident should make is to Eagle disposal if you are missed. First phone call. We'd like you to call the second call to City Hall. The reason behind that is I'm working to try and keep Eagle accountable for your trash picking. If you're only calling Eagle, they may or may not tell me. So Barbara records those misses, and I work with her on them. So please make two phone calls, one Eagle and one near the City Hall. So on that one, so I just want to clear that up a little bit. There was some confusion and questions on that. Couple of things going on. I believe this Friday night, the 16th, MLK Boulevard will be closed for Midsummer Night's Lock Party. Chief, I think this is this weekend, right? And that's sponsored by Second Century Alliance Downtown Coatesville. They'll be honoring the Merchant of the Year, and I heard earlier you talked about America's Finest. America's Finest is actually your awardee Friday night for the Business of the Year. So if you get a chance to come out, it's from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM. It'll be on MLK Boulevard. There's going to be some things going on in the parking lot of BBAA. So, you know, come out and have a good time on that one. I've been watching social media. Splitting Edge is talking about an early opening sometime in beginning of August. So looking forward to Splitting Edge, getting the ax throwing going there. Sorry, I'm using my social media account to kind of track my announcements tonight. Coatesville Community Center for Health, which is out a little further by 11th by Tennis Sports. They've announced two events for summer camps, a teen chef and a tot chef and me summer camp. The opportunity for tots and their parents and teens to, if you're home for the summer break, how to prepare healthy meals and snacks. So the opportunity is that you would be able to go out there. It's three days, July 14th, July 24th, sorry, 14th, 21st, and 28th of July, and August 4th. Each day is a different day, how to handle canned foods, how to handle prepared meals. So it's an opportunity for you to work alongside a parent or learn yourself how to feed, take care of your own self during the day. And then one sad news, in a way. What I can tell, I've been thinking about this, I think it's the second oldest business in Coatesville, will be closing and leaving. Larry Turttalk has announced the closing of Turttalk's furniture. So they are now having a sale, and they're closing down. I got to know his dad, I got to know Larry. They've been around 160 years. They opened in 1862. So, you know, if you, I'm sorry, 120 years. They opened up in 1902. So it's still here, it's 120 years they've been a business in the city. And I think it'll be a loss for the city. When I first came here after college, I bought furniture from Turttalk's. I'm sure many people have. So if you get a chance, if you're not buying something from Turttalk's, we send them a note of thank you for their years of services to the community of Coatesville. So that is my report.
I have a question, Ted.
Yeah.
Because of that business being in our community so long, and Mr. Turttalk and his family being so involved with giving them some type of recognition affirmation or something regarding their business.
It's something we can definitely think of. There's no question. I'll reach out to Larry and say, so yes, and I'll work with you all to come up with a nice citation for you. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. The complete statistical package is in your report tonight. Just a few highlights. Our total incidents from the 911 Chester County 911 Center were down from the month of June from May, down from 2145 from May to 2029 for June 2029. The total incidents responded to, which includes those that are reported through our front desk, were just up slightly to 3,021 for June, up from 2,963 for May. Get some additional highlights that we usually speak to each report. Had three Narcan saves for the month of June. Did 11 parts inspected installations by our certified technicians. The party provided no cost or expense to our citizens. We also had our Coffee with the Chief, which helped Salvation Army on June 1st. Very well attended. Appreciate those that came out. And we just had the one for July, which is held at the CYI, CYI, Coatesville Youth Initiative, will be back in the Benner Building. Very well attended also. And then our next one is on August 3rd, which is at Marriott. Marriott put a request in and asked us if we would be willing to come up there. They would say they would love to host Coffee with the Chief, so we'll be there. I think a lot of people sort of forget and don't realize that the Marriott still is in the city. You know, it's pretty far north from what people tend to think of as the city limits. But it is still in the city, so we're more than happy to help and support the Marriott now that it's reopened. So we'll be up there on August 3rd, for those who would like to attend. We also were at the Palmer Park, a grand reopening and dedication for Phase 2 and 3. That was on June 16th. We had our World Rights Truck up there. Special shout out, thanks to the Pearson's for supporting us through Rides. And we are also unfortunately have to report that we did experience a homicide at the month of June. On June 10th, in front of the Benner Building on Lincoln Highway, City Resident Shannon Torres unfortunately succumbed to gunshot wounds after he was transported to Bailey Hospital. They were not able to save Mr. Torres. I know he's now well-known to many old council, and has been a part of the city for a long time. So it was unfortunate. We are working diligently to try to solve that homicide with assistance from the Chester County detectives and the District Attorney's Office. And we will continue to work that case and hopefully be able to make an arrest here in the future. So on that note, unfortunately, I will close my report unless there are any questions for council tonight. 8:30 to 10:00, thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Citizens' hearings non-agenda. Okay, during our citizen's hearings portion of the meeting, I'll call your name, you'll come to the podium, you'll have three minutes to express yourself. Once you hear the buzzer, I would ask that you would complete your sentence and return to your seat, allowing the next person their time as well. And first up is Lauren Davis. Would you please state your name and address?
Yes, hi, my name is Lauren Davis. Now reside at 25 South Fourth Avenue Apartment B19 in Coatesville, Pennsylvania, Ash Park Apartments. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your time. I'm here because I felt like there was no other option to do. I've contacted the city, I put in maintenance requests. Ash Park Apartments complex has fallen apart. We had leaks that they refused to fix. I had spoken to Mr. Houston quite a time, a few months ago, and requested an inspection and finally found out that my unit has never been inspected, which was supposed to be inspected by your unit. The maintenance statelet fall apart, it feels like. It's the people who are now in hood finish for Section 8, that have to get inspections, are not treated the same as the ones who pay out of pocket. I have three small children, I'm a disabled vet, I was out of discharge. There is no other way to get the property management or either the owners to come out and fix it. I do believe my apartment, you know, contains mold. It was a walkthrough. One of the Coatesville enforcers, they came through, he planned out to get a cycle mold. However, if I cannot afford to pay for it and can't see that it's mold, then they won't do anything about it. Right now, my kitchen is uncookable. My apartment is uninhabitable, and it's not sanitary for me or my children to stay there. And when I placed complaints above to the City of Coates, I was retaliated against. And one of your employees that works in the Coates Department actually called property management and gave them my name while I was still not complaining a few months ago. I've lived there for 10 years, and they just told me they would not read my leaks. As of August 31st, me and my children would have to find somewhere else to live.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Dennis Dancler.
Good evening. Dennis Dancler, he's making highway in Bridget, Missouri. Basically, we're just going to make an announcement on behalf of Second Century Alliance, Amber. The event is actually Saturday, the 16th. So Mrs. Davis said it was Friday, so we just wanted to make sure we communicate and correct it. And so we want her to get as much support as possible. Okay? Thank you.
Also, I want to comment on the trash thing. We have, you know, in your early report that tenants are throwing or trash into the city containers. It's an ongoing problem. I have the same issue, you know, and have it in the front and the back. People just, tenants put a garbage trash into our things. So you have the same problem that I have, so.
We have to actually hide our containers inside the building, although they're not issued by adjacent neighbors who have tenants who are dumping their, our SEPTA containers and not ordering them for their own properties. And we haven't addressed that with them accordingly, but just so you know, this also, we actually pour ours in now into the building.
You have cameras. You have cameras.
But we've had tenants that have complained about it as well, that they can't get their trash in. And we tell them they're already filled up, and they're not filled up by them, filled up by adjacent owners.
Thank you. Mr. Jenny Livingston.
Bring this mic down. Good evening, council. Good evening, city administration, and good evening, residents. I just want to take a moment as a longtime Coatesville resident to acknowledge our council on, for our, our council and our police department, and of course, our city manager, Mr. Logan, for our moting event. The call was answered, and not only did our community come out, but our leadership came out. I believe all but our, all council members, but one might have showed up, and I think just because she was, she wasn't there. So it was an opportunity for our community to work side by side with our leadership and move a ton or few to the motes. And that was very inspiring. And just, just like this weekend, to see Mr. Folks out there, but also our council president dancing barefoot out there, Sue shaking her tail feathers. And to, to, to really celebrate with our community and to take the stigma off of off of our leadership. You know, it's, 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 it's a hard job that you're doing, and it's such a sacrifice. And to be able to take that sacrifice and turn it into inspiration, like what Mr. Folks did, by just, you know, going in that dunk tank and using the skills of oration that he has to sort of call people out and encourage them to not only get involved, but to contribute their dollars, their well-earned dollars. So he led our community to contribute $200 just off of a whim of an idea to ask them to contribute to the hat. And that's the spirit of leadership that I am grateful for and that I can mention. And just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Jenny, before you go, can you please give that hat to Richard probably?
I will.
And thank you for your leadership. That was awesome. Okay, so that finishes our citizen's hearing.
Counsel on the Green?
Yes.
Counselwoman Alameen?
Yes.
Counselwoman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Fowles? Councilman Simpson?
Yes.
Counselwoman Lavender North?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think we've moved on to our council comments. Mr. Folks.
I just want to thank the president. You know, when I first got on the council, I felt right in and had a big form. But I didn't. I just jumped right in and kind of happened to kind of do this. And it took me through a loop that, you know, the blood that, that just took me through a loop, and I had to step back for a while. But going that time in four years, Pastor Scott called me every other day and prayed. But going that time in four years, past the stop and call, me every other day, I pray. Pray with. And then stepped back. It booked that all count. Because I didn't know. Wow. I put the signal in my bag. And it was good. I thought I was going the right path. With the right reason. But when I stepped back and I started to watch. What's good? What was big? And I asked the Lord to get me back into council. And two days, the last week before, Union Day, that pulled me out of the loop. And tell the story of the city. Of the merchants. Of the bull, the mules. And this given. That's what made me think about it. I asked the Lord, how can I get back into that flow? And you knew that it was that. Then I got back into. Um, thank you. Praying for me. I will try to do my best. But I'm not going to do it for us.
Ms. Val?
Well, Union Day was great. My first time that becomes perfect. 10 minutes, 15 minutes, but I was enjoying myself. I enjoyed being with everyone above 123. And to do that, and our stories are more and more intensive than we think.
Mr. Simpson?
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for coming out. Also, I want to say congratulations to Larry Sherptoff. I actually worked for Larry's father and grandfather when I was in high school. So it's, it's an institution that's been there a long time.
Make sure that when I kid.
Hello?
We're listening.
Oh, okay. I hear somebody else talking on there.
That's Councilwoman Alameen, if you would, you, while Mr. Simpson's speaking. Thank you.
But, and I didn't hear, I couldn't hear Mr. Houston when he was addressing the young lady that had issues with her apartment building and everything. What was the outcome? What, what?
It's an ongoing matter and Mr. Houston is going to contact her so they can discuss it further.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because he, he had his mask on and I, you know, unless you're right up on those microphones, it's very difficult to hear. But, okay, I couldn't hear what the outcome was. But thank everybody for coming out and I'll try and get to the next one. It's been tough being on the road and working on godly hours, so.
Where are you at?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you out of state?
I didn't get back until just a little while ago.
Oh, okay. I apologize. Ms. Val, me, I just want to thank everybody for coming out and have a good night. Thank you. I am, again, just want to thank everyone else. I just so appreciate the administration and everyone, the Unity Day team. So appreciate Jenny, all your, your level of commitment to our parks and rec. And then the thing is, I don't know if people understand that you're a volunteer and not an employee and the commitment that you have for what you do is just phenomenal. I got such a kick out of Mr. Donald Folks. But again, knowing who he is, yeah, Donald is just a blessing and is always willing to do whatever it takes here in the city. You know, we, we've had a lot of issues and the, the young lady who came, I don't know if we could get LTL involved in it. Mr. Houston, I heard you say something about us not being able to really determine or do a lot about the mold. But it's been a lot, just, you know, it's a lot on our departments and it's going to take a lot to get it fixed. It didn't get broken with you. It was already broken. So, you know, it's going to take some, you know, I don't, I don't know how we're going to get it all done, but I know that I have full confidence in our Coles Department and our city manager that you guys want to make it happen. You know, today in my Facebook memories, it popped up the first job fair that we had. And I'm like, it was a year ago and I'm just so grateful for Mr. Logan bringing his workforce development talents to the city. And having, how many job fairs have we had so far?
Seven.
Seven. And I know Rich gave us a report on our last meeting about our median income being increased, about our earned income being increased. And I say that to say that it's those things that have been done and those foundations that have been laid that are helping us. You know, the cliche around town is coastal is rising. So as we rise, Mr. Logan is making sure our income rises soon. You know, we hear, you hear so much, you know, about, you know, so many people that are for the development and so many people that are not for the development. Or how come this one gets that and I don't get this? And, you know, we're driving people away or we're doing. I tell you, I'm so grateful for you because in my eyes, in the seat that I sit, I see us bringing people along. You know, change is hard. You know, things that don't change remain the same. And we can't afford, as a city in Chester County, to remain the same. It's time for change. And so in order for us to change, it's going to take the entire community. You know, you're, we look at the amount of, we have a lot of renters in the city and we need our renters and we need people to take a little bit more time, take a little bit more pride, you know, and stop dumping out on the sidewalk. Stop throwing McDonald's bags out your cars. Because I think sometimes people forget that it's us that are doing the littering. It's us that is not cutting the grass. It's us that are not cleaning up our trash. It's not the Coles office that's doing it. You know, they can try to find people and keep up with people, but we got to do better as a community. You know, if we're going to have better, we got to do better. You know, so everybody has to take responsibility. You know, even though they blocked off Fourth Avenue, we're getting ready to rehabilitate that area and put our new train station there. They didn't block it off for a dumping ground. They didn't block it off for you to dump trash bags back there or mattresses back there. But these are the kinds of things that we have going on. And I just want our residents to know that we want, we need to do better because we want to have better. You know, and I just thank everyone and I just hope that, you know, change is coming and I just hope that we're, we're just prepared. Thank you very much. I want to thank everyone for coming out. I echo my colleagues, you know, especially with regard to our Unity Day. It was an awesome time out there. It was just good to put work aside and just have fun. Yeah, I went home and had to soak and all that good stuff. But I, I enjoyed myself while it lasted. And it was just good to see the smiles and hear the laugh. You know, it's just something about when you hear a child's laughter from down in there, good. It, it will make you laugh and not even know why, except the fact that you heard how they were tickled. And that's what I was hearing at Unity Day. It was so awesome. And I don't know, I think it was you and Jenny, Mr. Livingston, that mentioned, like, the leadership. All, all our leadership was out there, just mixing in with the community. And it was just a wonderful time. The only negative thing was I didn't get any of Ricky's chicken. He had the most beautiful wings on his grill. And I walked around the park and when I got that, they were all gone. I said to a young lady, I'm on my way over here to get the wing from Ricky. She said, no, I got the last one. Who does that? But it was a wonderful time out there. And no, we didn't have fireworks. They were not canceled. We didn't plan on having that. We had fireworks in June after the carnival. We'll have fireworks here in July. It's not the city putting them on, but there's going to be another carnival at Abdella. And they're planning on doing fireworks. The city will do them either on, what is it, Labor Day? Memorial? One of those. Labor. Labor Day or New Year's Eve. We will have our fireworks. We just won't be doing them right now. Always heard the city's fireworks were the best. I dare y'all to come out and see our fireworks when we do have the display. Mr. Folks, you already know. I was, I, I just want you to know. If my throwing arm was in order, man, you'd have never got out that water. But it was a wonderful time. Mr. Logan, he came out in his sweats, T-shirt, like, all about the business at hand. He was running, he couldn't stay still. Did you eat at all? It was just a blessed time, you know, for the city, for the community at large. The rain kind of scared everybody, but in spite of the rain, like, the water features were there, so you're going to get wet anyway. So don't let the rain scare you away. Sue Springsteen and I danced, we had a ball. We had a ball. And all in all, we had wonderful vendors out there. Sponsors were awesome. Our political leadership, our representation from our state senator, our state representative was there. It was just a wonderful time. The sun wasn't beating down on us, so it allowed us to enjoy it even a little more, you know? Fifty-fifty entertainment, Mr. Mandray Boggs comes through every year, our sound man. He comes through for us every time. He did a wonderful job and I just want to shout him out, say thank you to him because he did hold us down again this year. You know, we're, I, I think I said to Sue, Colesville's rising. And she said, no, Colesville has risen. I'm like, okay, let's move forward then. We're, we're going to roll with it. We've risen and now we're moving. Y'all move with us. Thank you so much for coming out. Don't count it robbery because we're doing some things here and we want you to be a part of it. We definitely need you to be a part of it. So please, don't stop coming. Come back. We have vacancies on our boards and commissions. Get involved. If there's something you think we should be doing, get involved. We've been talking about trash and cleanups. We can organize block cleanups. All you got to do is reach out and say you want to work with us and I'm willing. Call me, text me, email me. We can get together, organize that cleanup and get it done, block by block, if you like. We're here for one another. We're who we're waiting for. We can't wait for anybody else to come and help us at this point. We got to step up and get our hands dirty. We got to do it. We got to do it. We say what we want. Let's go for it. I'll help any way I can. I'm not super, but I'm here. So thank you to our admin. Mr. Jefferson, you, you hung in there with us. He was chilling in his, in his men in black shades. Y'all see him? I'm like, solicitor. Chief, thank you so much. The kids enjoyed you. I saw, I've seen several pictures of you, several. Mr. Logan, you already know, you've been awesome. Ruthanne, thank you, love. Thank you for always just bringing it all together for us. To our committee, our committee has been awesome. The Parks and Rec Committee, awesome. So thank you. The paintings, I don't know where they are, but in the booth, they had the most amazing paintings of city views. It was awesome. I was, I, I, that was the first time I've seen them. They were amazing. They were wonderful. And where the youth did them, right?
Yes, all community members of all ages.
Okay. It was wonderful. Those displays should be, like, displayed here so those that didn't get to see them, if you can. Mr. Logan, if you two can put something together, I would be so elated to see that because they were some awesome pictures. And the fact that the residents did them makes it even better. We got work to do, y'all, and we can get it done together. Yes, sir? Teresa Marie, the photo fair. She was awesome also. She was all over the place. She partied with us. We had a ball. We had a good time, you know, if you weren't there, you missed. You really missed out. And your next opportunity will be August 5th at Abdella Park, where the music experience starts. It won't be water slides and dunk tanks, but it'll be food. It'll be fun and it'll be awesome entertainment. So come hang out. Bring your lawn chair and just enjoy yourselves. That's what we're trying to do. Reach our community and make you comfortable. So thank you so much to everyone. Mr. Houston, God bless you. Good to see you, my brother. And together we'll get it done. God bless you all. Thank you for coming out. And can I get a motion? So moved. Ms. Val and Mr. Folks? Ms. Val and Mr. Folks? Hold counsel, please.
Councilman Simpson?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Foltz? Councilwoman Allen? Councilwoman Alamein?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lavender North?
Yes.
Thank you.